Will you please rise for the pledge led by Commissioner Joyner and the prayer, our student, the prayer led by Commissioner Meeks and the pledge led by Commissioner Joyner. Stevens ain't here, he's telling me all this stuff.
Great.
Thank you for this day. We just want to ask you to please, in a special way, be with our country as we have upcoming elections are coming, Heavenly Father, just ask them to be with us. Be with our leaders, so I'm just asking them to please be with us forward as we make the decisions for Levy County that will make the right decisions. I ask Heavenly Father to be with the families and the beloved ones that were lost in Levy County this past week, God, just to lift them up in a special way. Be with them, comfort them, take advice, thank Jesus, amen.
The United States of America, and your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Please be seated. Somebody's here in the floor, we can't.
They passed along.
What?
No, they're not, never get used to it.
Sorry.
Look, man, it's the only place around here where we don't have to pause.
Yeah, me too.
Your nation is God. Alright. It's the way it's written.
I was in the water, I was in the water down in, one of the members insisted that you do not do the pause.
Scarlet, was it Scarlet for senior?
That was Alfonso Lady.
Cause Scarlet throws me off.
Yeah, that's where I think from.
I was going to count it then.
Everybody in Water Down does it like that.
Okay.
And a lot of other states, like, was mandatory.
Oh. Alright, moving on, uh, public comment, is anybody here for public comment first thing this morning? People have an opportunity again at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, we'll move on, we're gonna s- move past the public hearing and allow the Florida Department of Transportation to make their presentation so they can get back on the road to, uh,
Lake City.
Columbia County where they don't do the pledge, right? Man, these guys have got control of all the money, I was out in the parking lot talking nicely to my guys.
And I'm Barney Bennett with Department of Transportation, I do have two handouts. Again, I'm Barney Bennett with Department of Transportation. I'm just gonna go over a couple things really quickly and then I'll hand it over to Bill to just talk about some projects this morning. Uh, this is just an overview of what I'm gonna talk about. Under solicitation for new projects, the Transportation Alternatives, which is the project for bike paths and sidewalks, uh, sent out a request back in September, I need those project requests back to me by December ninth. Uh, Scratch Stop and Safety, which is a grant program for paving dirt roads, servicing existing paved roads, uh, sent that out also in September, I need it back by December thirtieth. And Safe Race to School, which is handled through our safety office, we need those applications back to our safety office by December thirtieth. On the work program, I gave you a printout of what our current draft tentative work program is, this is as of yesterday, uh, it's still being finalized a little bit. Once it's finalized on, uh, on October thirty-first, it'll be posted to our website. The website is D two W P V eight dot com, which is Shoreford District Two Work Program Public Hearing dot com. But in the meantime, if you look through here and you have any questions on it, please get back to us and we're making your final adjustments now. In addition to the website, which will, uh, be posted in the work program as well as, um, the ability to post comments, if you'd like to meet with us face to face, we're gonna have an informational meeting on November eighth in, uh, in Columbia County, Lake City. And on Thursday, November tenth is when our official, uh, public hearing will be. And folks, that's, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me, I'll hand it over to Bill. Very good.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, boy, slow down, slow down, slow down.
We promise we won't go forward.
So here, my sidewalk is still here.
Yes, the, uh,
Did it get pushed back another year or has it always been in twenty nineteen?
It's always been in twenty nineteen, for the construction of it. That's up by the schools?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Two thirty-seven. Bridges.
The first one, with that Levy County traffic, they go, minus three, can each other please, please traffic, see what you're talking about with that?
That's a county wide, it's a county wide, project where we keep open the traffic obstacles.
So if, if we have one that we think is necessary that y'all look at pretty hard, if I give a letter?
Send me emails, letter email, these one we'll do, we'll get down to the traffic obstacles and do traffic, so.
Oh, we got all three of them on here.
C Street goes past. Three C Street, Little Bass.
Oh, Doctor Day or the other one. I think that's going in the previous year.
We'll say this does begin in twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, so all the twenty seventeen projects are priority, let's bring it out.
Yeah, Doctor Day, they've gotten seventeen, that's why it's not on there.
Any other questions, Mr. Bennett? Alright, thank you, Mr. Barney.
Alright, thank you.
A real quick, this, this is the first stand out I gave to the area, this is on the project that's on your sheet, is the Canoe Road two thirty-nine bridge over Little Walkers Ass, but we had a bridge replacement scheduled for twenty twenty. So we were looking at it and we came up with an idea that instead of replacing the bridge, we just realigned the road.
Have you seen this, Alex?
This, this just came up.
You have another copy for her?
Yeah, I think we got some of this. This is, this is
Off the grass.
Yes, and I told my guys I was coming down here today and I said, I'll just throw it out there and see what y'all think. You don't have to make any decisions, it's just an idea.
I, I may be incorrect, but I think that the, the bridge that we're admitting is the bridge we just repaired.
Oh, is it?
I think so.
Yeah, we got a bridge right up there, and, um, it's under, we got the money to replace it, but we were thinking, well, instead of replacing it, we'll just maybe, um, realign the road. That's not the ideal intersection there anyway, so, kind of, and that would be a bridge you wouldn't have to worry about anymore, so, it's just an idea.
Yes, I'm, well, I, I'm, and, and I'm not trying to be rude or cut y'all, but, uh, there's been like three rollovers at that intersection with semi trucks and auto trucks in the last few years. So there is a, a bit of an issue, now part of it was corrected, uh, two years ago.
Right.
Whenever y'all extended the deceleration lane, because the deceleration lane was pretty, pretty short, and they extended it. I don't have a problem with, with, with changing this intersection around, because to me it is a little sketchy, the way you come in on that curve and heavy load and, and even in a pickup truck pulling a boat.
We just had a wreck there about a half ago, the truck fell over.
Again, this is, we were looking at, you know, we, this is our schedule to replace this bridge, and we said, you know, we've kind of looked at this, we came up with this idea, and, you know, it's a tall bridge, so, um,
You're talking about the bridge one three thirty-nine?
Yes, on Little Walkers Ass.
Is that already fixed?
We replaced some pilings.
Replaced pilings?
Yeah.
So it's not, it's replaced, it's been repaired.
Anyway, just, just an idea, we're just throwing it out there, if something y'all want us to pursue, would be glad to pursue it, or if you just want the bridge replaced, keep the light, here's what we do, that is what we do.
In the, in honor of the taxpayers who were seated in this audience, is the, with the acquisition of this light, right of way, and this road building be about the same cost as the bridge replacement?
It would be a little bit less.
Be less?
Even down the roadway acquisition, it should be less. And then, of course, for people down, that's another bridge you wouldn't have to worry about.
Yes, I agree.
Cold sack, eighty foot diameter cold sack, all sitting, it's got, will be a big enough to handle a, a horse coming through there.
Okay, what the, what that is, the reason we got it, there's a property owner there that we have to maintain access to, and that cold sack just allow people to park around, if they came down there, they could, they could put it around.
Will D O T have public meetings on this with residents in that area?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I, I want to run it by, you get, you want to run it by here first, we'd have to have some kind of public meeting on this one.
I have another question, there's a bridge before that two that's, maybe it's tiered too.
Yeah, that's the, the three thirty-nine at Little Walkers Ass, though, right? And that is on here to be replaced.
The, the second one?
Yes.
Okay, and is that where it's gonna be closed, before that bridge two?
Now, that one isn't, uh, well, they're both in the same year, but the, um, I'm not sure of the details of it, twenty twenty's still pretty far out, we're still working out the detail. But, uh, the three thirty-nine bridge over the Walkers Ass, whether that's bridge number three four zero zero will be replaced, that's planned to be replaced as well. Again, this is just an idea we had, just to kind of not have to replace the bridge, just get a better alignment with that bridge line.
I agree with that. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cannon?
Mister Shannon, Mister Gentlemen. Have Mister Henderson tell us, U S nineteen from Levy County line, yes, is that what C L means, to Jefferson County line? Jefferson County, Florida?
That's how we next.
Yeah, but that's on the bottom, because there's traffic planning, all of a sudden, there's a planning study that's out nineteen, I'll look it before we do all that on. There's a planning study. Finish that. That's, that's what, that answered her question, that's, she's looking at that last one on the best, that's the planning side.
So you, uh, time the tablet that U S nineteen would continue to Jefferson County line?
Yeah, yeah, U S nineteen goes from Florida, Georgia, all the way to Keys, and we're gonna be looking at that keys from, um, actually from all through our district, basically, we're gonna be looking at that stretch of road.
Maintains also vibration routes, going to water park.
Any other questions, Mr. Henderson? Yes, sir.
Is this new plan either visible for people on the way?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's the web cloud we, we put out. The program web cloud is on D two W two seven eight. And also, we got on the west side of North Florida roads, like, these kind of stuff will be on that as well, we'll put this on that. Again, this is all off the presses, like, literally a week ago, we came up with this idea, and I told them, I was coming down here, I was just gonna throw it out there, we will, we talked, we all done it, but
It's funny, because I actually contacted some folks in Chiefland about this, last time there was an accident, because I had a concerned citizen who was able to find me real easy at the overstore. And I'm breaking from there down into where I was at, and said, man, y'all gotta do something about that this evening.
It's not all right.
I, I have a question, and I don't know if you thought this through, but what, what would happen to the existing right of way that would no longer be necessary?
Okay, that's, of course, for the, you have to maintain the gray there to, to try and access those property owners, but the blue for the bridge is, that would all be removed. And then the land would belong to the county, and then they could do whatever, they could surplus it, or keep it, or whatever.
Rub it underneath?
I mean, no. But you would degrade, you would have to maintain that, but it's gray to provide access to property owners. You are getting a new piece of road too.
Yes, sir.
And that would, that would go, would be
I think, if my memory serves me correctly, that, where that line, where that road's gonna go through there, that's about the size of that piece of property, because there's a little triangle separate from that, from rest of that big cubes. That may, how about that lane there? Yeah, more access. I, I appreciate y'all looking at that, doing that.
We're impressed with them talking about this more.
That intersection is
I didn't mean to just throw this on y'all, but it was, um, they had it drawn up, and so I'm coming to Levy County, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna throw it out there voluntarily.
That's why in Levy County, I'm gonna put something else to eat. Do away with some light bulbs in the cap, and put a traffic light, one twenty-one, three twenty-six, or about dog store there. You know what I'm talking about, so, everybody knows what I'm talking about.
Yes, we've looked at it several times.
That's a danger, dangerous intersection.
You breeze through, or you take someplace else, and said it wasn't necessary.
Y'all take about We had a new light bulb by the cap, didn't pay for that.
Rick Scott's gonna switch all of it over to you.
Whatever you're doing, you're nineteen, that's the, U S nineteen, you're saying, three forty-one, where, where three one forty-one goes as nineteen?
That upward angle?
Yes, that upward angle, and when you get to the middle, you yield, and the people at the stop sign stop, but people at the stop sign, they get, they've been at the stop sign for longer than you've been at the yield sign, that they have the right of way. And you can literally pull up there and just pull over and sit and watch people almost hit each other, people turning to the left to go south, and looking back north at an angle. And whenever you start to drive and make that turn, somebody will be right to the left. They'll be coming across the middle of the highway. We were talking about that.
And that's exactly what we're talking about.
It is, it's just like, it's just such a funny, and if you're in a certain kind of vehicle, and there's an obstruction there, you know, looking like in a toddler, they're shorter than a super, you actually have to pull up there and kind of go this way to be able to see.
And then three twenties, just a little piece right there, and it's just a big crowded little intersection. But anyway, we appreciate
Okay, and, and just, just another for information, of course, the C Street down at Cedar Key, that process is finally reached its conclusion, we had our public hearing on that, couple, well, when the horse came to line thing, that we were down there. And, um, one of the things that came up on C Street was they, we could kind of call street rail there, and a lot of the citizens down in the morning, people have a little biases, but we just come up with this, um, sort of panel and rail, and that's probably, that's what we're gonna do there. So I just kind of wanted to run that by y'all as well, but we're gonna run it by the safety commission as well.
They think it's a little more decorative.
No, but that's what they asked for our, our plan's public hearing, so we're gonna try to call that there.
Mr. Grant?
I'm sorry.
Chairman, is D O T surveying the three forty-three between forty-one north and two, two forty-one?
Yes.
That's, that's, that is on, no, well, but that's, you know, for repair, that's a project we've got, come to a scrap project, I'm talking about three thirty-five.
A.
It goes past three thirty-five A, I'm talking about three forty-three from forty-one north to two forty-one. So we've been out there now for a couple of three weeks.
That's a project.
That may be safe, that may not be part of our, I know we're, I know we have a scrap project in that area, but it's three thirty-five A.
Well, this goes in front of three thirty-five A, in fact, three thirty-five A ends at two, at three forty-three.
I don't think that's true.
Must be safe.
Yeah.
That would be, if that's what I'm bringing, I don't think it would be any worse than the primary thing, you know, for the names, guys, but no, the county wouldn't be maintaining that, or the city or somebody. Very much of those are around there on the dock, and then, whenever they break, the people break them, but, yeah, well, I don't think these are gonna break unless it's far hills or something.
This is different than, or the handrail, this is on top of the concrete. I don't think so, I think this is like the ones that they have, like, there's a, there's a river anywhere, and where
I think we've done one of these in Jacksonville, and, um, I don't think they've had any breakers, but, and then if a car runs through it, you know, you're gonna, but, I don't think that's gonna happen there.
It's a local issue, the handrail thing is just along the sidewalk.
Hold my mic, I want you to write down.
Hang on, sorry.
Uh, just an update, uh, C forty A in Yankee Town, that's, uh, when the research was widened, was coming here, is that still on track?
Yeah, Barney, that's a, that was a scrap project.
Yeah, must have been.
And, and also, um, the sidewalk slash bike path on forty, that was going from, uh,
The country store or?
That's a lap, that's a lap project, the store from, and this, that's lap.
Yeah, that was a seventeen project, a couple of years ago.
We're, we're in the middle of the engineer process right now.
Alright, you know, you want me to write something down?
Yep, there are, on forty-one, about, three twenty-six. There's this start construction on another family dog store, we have a major, for a family church there, many store, and also a festival. We got a cluster, all of them up there together on time, y'all might want to get that a little, I might ask you to do anything right now, but might want to look at it in the future.
Any other questions, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Bennett?
Alright, well, we appreciate you coming down here, and if y'all have any questions about anything, feel free to call us.
Beep out.
Thank you, sir.
If somebody else comes up like that, please call, please, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys. Alright, back to our public hearing for the, uh, request approval for the transmission of the county proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, as recommended by the Hooton County Planning Commission. Schenley, how are you this morning?
Good morning. Good morning, uh, just had one question, and I, uh, this is a sacrifice that the board approved motion, uh, to approve transmission of the county's proposed comprehensive plan amendments. And as they are included in your packet, and remember, this was, whatever this was, past year, um, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, the planning commission worked on the changes, and took them to view this time, we had any kind of recognition from the board, or from the funding commission, excuse me. Uh, the thing the commission did here, this had a public hearing on October third, and they recommended to the board and county missions to, um, approve the changes as proposed, as included in the packets, so, um, unless you have any questions, or anything else I can help out with?
I do have a question.
Okay.
On page six of sixteen. Is it six sixteen? Is it, um, coastal management element, or is it, is it other? Probably at the bottom, but, uh,
Infrastructure.
Okay, we'll find out. How was the one point one? Still wait with the water management, is it, is it in the water? Do we add drainage to that?
Absolutely. So add language like drainage, uh, water maintenance, result of water plant policies, um, okay, I'll, I'll put some more in there. Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions? Schenley, uh, level of service, are you better than a C or is it?
It is, whoops, are you on?
Well, I'm on page five or six of the transportation. It talks about level of service, and it says our level of service on U S nineteen and U S twenty-seven. We'll be in there with a C level service.
Yes, is no longer required, and F D O T, I think, is, well, they're not here, but C is the new.
The new B?
Yeah. So we're just kind of following suit, and just to let you know, I did take all the applicable elements, um, to the appropriate reviewing agencies ahead of time, just to kind of word off, we've been preemptive about, so that if we get an order, and when we do, it won't be anything, no surprise, so, they've all looked at, F D O T's looked at this as well. Kind of give you a blessing.
One thing jumped out at me, um, from this report and the analysis was, uh, you know, one of the first things was that we had seven hundred and forty-three new home permits and eight hundred and sixty-seven mobile permits, which is almost fifty fifty, which is good. Uh, but I see approximately ninety-seven point two percent of the, I think that wasn't the issue, the issue is how much vacant land we still have, plenty of room to grow in Levy County. Plenty of room to grow, we have a lot of vacant land in rural residential forestry, rural residential agriculture.
Right.
And then just general rural.
And you're
Not that much.
Yeah, your, your, your ag enforcement take up several percent of your lands, through your counties, which is not very good, it's one for ten, one for twenty, well, that's
Alright, does anybody else have any questions for Miss Schenley? Alright, we will now open up the public hearing persisting comment, and we'll go row by row, starting with row one. Row two?
Just wondering, those number of permits you just mentioned over, how long a period of time?
Uh, that was
Since two thousand five, two thousand six.
I just, I, close my Anybody else on row two? Row three? Row four, oh, row three.
The court will be so kind as to take the C O off the end of my name and put an L D, it's Rothschild.
Whoa, 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 you're getting ahead of, getting ahead of yourself here, we're still doing, uh, our public hearing for, sorry, no problem.
My first one.
No problem. Man, this guy's got it down, he's coming to the podium and everything, so, alright, anybody on row three who has anything, anything on this public hearing for the comprehensive plan? Row four, back wall. Alright, I will close the public hearing. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board? Is your amendment? We have a motion to approve with, uh, Mr. Lewis, who pressed the change, uh, signed by Commissioner Rod Meeks, as in further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you.
Alright, now, uh, Mr. Rubin, it's your turn.
Thank you. I would ask the commission, please pave in front of the mailboxes, uh, that's on Northwest one hundred and forty-second streets and Seventy-sixth Avenue. It's a mud hole. If you need to get out of your car after a race of three or four days, you're stepping into three or four inches of water, and, uh, to mess. About a year ago, I spoke to the past road commission, road commissioner, and, uh, asked him to pave it, he said, at the time, he couldn't pave it, but he would grade it. And while he was still the commissioner, it did get graded periodically, and was pretty decent for a And while he was still the commissioner, it did get graded periodically and was pretty decent for a while. Now whoever the road, new road commissioner is, decided that didn't, doesn't be grade, graded and there's like a, you'll see a right in front of the mailboxes is like a six inch deep hole. So, if you can see your way clear to do that, I'm sure the area, the people in Swannie River and down, whatever the name of that little area is under your jurisdiction.
Are they adding, it looks like the first office is adding another set of mailboxes.
That's right.
Um, I, I want, anybody have any comment?
I'd get one, look at that one more time, I would.
I, I spoke with Alice about this and I think we're gonna, uh, paving unfortunately is not really an option in that area, but what we're gonna do, what we think we're gonna do is, uh, put down some buildings. We have some buildings available.
What's that?
It, it's, it's a, it's recycled asphalt.
Oh, really?
But whenever it gets hot and, you know, and gets drove over repeatedly, it, it packs down and it's almost like asphalt.
Well, that'd be cool.
The problem with, with asphalt is, is having to do the base and all that, so.
Well, I understand.
Is that still the plan, Alice?
Yes.
So we'll, we'll be able to do that for you.
Okay.
And that'll, that'll alleviate the water standing there, what it'll do is it'll, is it hopefully it'll move that water back away from the, from where y'all are.
Well, that, that whole little piece of dirt road from the mailboxes to the other side of the road is just a mess.
Yes, sir.
There's great big potholes in there and they continue, the second part is I want to have that road graded better. Because, uh, what they're doing doesn't work.
Yes, sir.
The last, uh, time it was graded, they did take about, oh, like fifty, seventy-five feet of dirt right at the edge of, of the one Northwest one forty and. And filled in some really bad potholes, which is working. But the rest of that block, about halfway up, is a, a groove right across the road.
Yes.
Where he screwed up with his, uh, with his grader and then almost Northwest one forty-second street, there's a vertical groove where he messed up with the grader. And then there's some really very deep potholes, but just grading, putting in dust into those potholes doesn't work because. Soon as somebody drives through, the dust goes away or if it rains good, the water washes away and you're able to, but it works, works, works the pothole.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, uh. They can repair those because there's potholes all over, you drive up that road, and you're like you're on a roller coaster, so.
With all due respect, Mr. Rothschild, I, I'll take you around, I'll show you a lot.
I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are.
And we, we will, we will address it, um, I can tell you that, it's already been looked at, um, Al, I spoke with Alice and she's got, she's got, uh, Jesse and those guys again. Now, you gotta understand, we are spread pretty thin and we did have a, about a two week, two and a half weeks, we didn't do any sort of road maintenance because we were hauling debris. And when we do that, we gotta let our tail geese down our trunks, so anyway, we're back on the, on the case and, uh, I think we will have you fixed up very shortly. We'll bring some, some rock in and put on that road and fill in those holes and hopefully it'll be in your satisfaction.
Thank you, and for my name.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Coast Development Council, Mr. Beckley.
What?
This guy's got to first, he sits right through.
This might be a record appearance, but I was here, uh, last time, so, uh, this was, uh, for a letter of support, he wanted to table it just to make sure that we were on the same page with the F L Cs and the F A Cs and the, all the other Cs and As and all that, but. Anyway, uh, so, yeah, uh, they are, uh, going to adopt what was presented at the, uh, the recent world summit, uh, the two initiatives proposed by the Florida Rural Economic Development Association. And so we are going to go. Oh, no problem. Go on.
We're laying a motion for that.
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
I'm making my familiar, approved as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jordan, a second by Commissioner Rooks, is there any further discussion? See, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Awesome, and real quick, I, uh, made it up to Fort McCoy to take it to her, um, so that was, uh, what you're quieting for last week. Yes, sir, yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I've done a wonderful time.
How did the conference call go yesterday?
Scott was able to participate, I had a last minute conflicts, um, but, um, there were some, uh, great conversations, uh, some, uh, needs, it's, you know, the situations where there might be some moving parts and it's gonna take, you know, it's not something else to be done just like that, but it, it sounds was very productive talk, so. We will have an update in the future.
All right, thank you. All right, we made a pretty big jump to a little clock, I don't see Mr. Jennings, so we're gonna skip over that part a little bit, is that all right with you? That'd work. Skip it for now. Uh, Mr. Welton, you have a non-agenda item, do I hear a motion here, non-agenda item, Commissioner Welton? We have a motion by Commissioner Rooks, we second by Commissioner Rooks. Any further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, Mr. Welton.
Uh, my non-agenda was one is the handicap ramp for the big dog and seater queue, um, and got, uh, some quotes from the manufacturer and also some quotes from, uh, man, I'm down to pick, fixing the aluminum can rows for the city, um, I've got some I'll pass out, you on?
Why don't you want to spend money on making it last? You like it more than money, bro. Uh, is this, uh, was all storm damage or is this any?
No, it's storm damage.
I mean.
Yesterday, I, uh, took Andrew Garble from Mills and Mary, we met Mr. Stanley down at the dock to look at, uh, possibility of repairing it versus replacing it, um, replacement from Gator docks, it's gonna be seven thousand forty dollars and that is not installed. And it could be sixty days before we can get it, they want our engineer to do a redesign on it, uh, a whole lot of ribbon roll. Uh, Mr. Stanley said, um, basically he can repair it with, for sixty-five hundred dollars, that includes materials, anything, have it fixed by Tuesday. And with the understanding that our engineer will go down and inspect the work, make, bless the tone and yards, um, that's gonna be my recommendation is to repair.
Does he carry insurance?
Um, I believe so, he's been working for the city and, um, don't have that, he was wanting to fix all them handrails on Dock Street.
And you say your preference, Mr. Stanley?
Yes, to get it done quicker.
I saw it.
Yes.
I'm making motion, I'm gonna put Mr. Stanley, you're gonna do the repair, that's exactly.
Second, can you check on, see if he got?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second, um. I, I'm gonna follow Mr. Lewis's setup now, I'm gonna make sure, I wanna make sure this guy's got property liability covered, if there's anything else in case, I'm not worried about him getting hurt, I'm worried about somebody getting hurt later.
Right.
So as long as, as that's.
And I'll get on his hand, make sure what all we require in the form of much.
Your motion reflects that, for a second.
Yes, yes, there is.
Good with that, I'm gonna say, are we good with that, is that a legal, legal motion to do it that way?
Just approve this quote?
We'll approve the quote, but we wanna be sure he's.
Yes.
Property licensed and insured bonded before we move forward with the repairs. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, that was Jordan on the motion and Ms. Lewis on the second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give us an update on what's going on with the lines?
Um, yes, ma'am, um, I, my guys, uh, down in the dock yesterday with our new pontoon with the scaffolding on it and they replaced all the hangers that were ripped off during the journey. This morning, they're down there replacing, uh, the pipes and getting back, relooking back on it.
Not a new pontoon, a repurposed pontoon.
A repurposed pontoon that was taken from.
Thank you.
The Oxon seven broader from four H.
Although we could have probably bought a new pontoon, but claiming against the storm.
Well, I had twenty-five hundred dollars.
It don't work that way.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, after all that song and everything.
That's right. His name's.
What's the four H doing for the kids?
It's an old boat, it's not their, it's not their current.
Yeah, this boat was donated to them and they never used it and moved it over to the Oxon and we pulled out the Oxon and fixed the trailer and all that on it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moody.
Mr. Moody.
Y'all have my question, careful any questions, we have a whole lot of overtime. Go get your licks in while you can.
Good morning. You had this this morning, the first one I have is, uh, we get these occasions from different municipalities, but this is a request to approve waiving tipping fees in the City of Bannon Springs from there. During that day, October twenty-second, twenty sixteen, that was a request from Mayor Chris Lancaster. So that, this coming settlement.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Rockmeeks, a second by Commissioner Rooks, is there any further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Moody, I told you recently about possibility of having what, uh, tipping fees waived and you had told me they don't do that, so I just have a question about why, why this is different.
I'm not sure what, yours was in reference to Jesse Applets, is there something, was that, or storm debris?
It was in reference to some of the storm debris that was left behind by the county that we were gonna take there.
We will pick, the county was picking up there on storm debris, y'all were contracting with grubs.
Right, but this was after you had finished picking your pickup, there was stuff left behind on the county road.
Right.
And I had said that when our guys are taking some stuff, they will pick that up, then the tipping fees were waived and you said, they don't do that.
We don't waive tipping fees normally except for a request from a municipality, but that was for storm debris though, and also hazardous waste. And I tell you hazardous waste was every Wednesday and it was free.
Right.
I must have misunderstood your question.
Yeah, one of the things you had said is we don't waive, they don't waive tipping fees.
We were talking about grubs, I'm pretty sure, we couldn't waive the grubs.
Talking about the town doing it somewhat.
I must have misunderstood you because.
Okay.
I checked with road department, we were gonna pick up our own debris because we didn't initiate a contract with grubs.
Right.
But y'all did initiate a contract with grubs.
That, this was.
But we do, and we have before board, English and others waive tipping fees under requests like this in City of Willis, but for now, just your annual cleanup day in cooperation with Waste Pro.
Mr. Gerald.
Can I say something about the free tip, the free dumping? It costs the county a lot of money when we go talking about free dumping. When we take in so many tons for free, the landfill operates off tipping fees, no tax, no nothing else, we have to generate a lot more garbage. Just, I guess, the sale you might say, the haul off, to overcome the price of all the free dumping. And if it was all based on tax base, I'd say, you know, do it, but the landfill takes care of itself and every time we take, it's forty-five, well, sixty, sixty-two dollars a ton or whatever, no, I'm sorry, thirty, thirty-something dollar a ton to get rid of it by the time we truck it to New River. We had probably forty-five, forty-eight dollar a ton and we take in twenty, thirty tons of free garbage, takes a lot of money to overcome that. I mean, that's, that's just my opinions, though.
Yes, who would know, but this is also, uh, this community, working together, we clean up the community, beautify it, raise the tax base, make it where, uh, and maybe we can get rid of some, uh, some undesirable waste that, that other, were, otherwise would be left either behind or left in the woods somewhere or something else, so. Yeah, wasting, I understand it costs us money to do it, but.
Waste pro per bags, uh, the hauling and the dumpsters, we just waive the tipping fees.
We have a, a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the second item I have is a request approval to, uh, declare the attached, uh, county inventory surplus so that we may dispose of it at the county auction on February twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen. And that's the list right there, it's quite extensive and, uh, hopefully that is all inclusive, it'd be something added which I bring back to you getting that five hundred, but. Now, that's just the counties, the sheriff has quite a list too, so there's gonna be a huge auction on the twenty-ninth, right?
Like it was before, it was going very professional, I'm making motion, uh, approve it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Please see if y'all are saying aye.
Okay, the next item I have is request approval to write off two, uh, unpaid bills from our two water utilities from twenty-fourteen. And, uh, the list is attached, uh, from University Oaks, there's, uh, eight accounts totaling one thousand and fifty dollars and ninety-six cent. And for Nantucket Utilities, there's one account in the amount of three oh, three hundred and seven dollars and seventy cent. The total write-off for twenty-fourteen would be one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
Ms. Cannon.
Mr. Shinley. I am a customer of the central Florida Electric Co-op system. If I were to fail to pay my bill in a timely fashion, after a while, my electricity would be cut off. How does that work with the water supply here?
If you pack up your boot and you didn't pay your electric bill, they can't collect. These are, these, most of these, not all of them are accounts that the people have left. We did keep the deposit, which was fifty dollars, but this is above the beyond, that's how the one person has a three dollar and seventy-nine cent water bill, because I question that, their bill was fifty-three dollars or seventy-eight dollars, whatever, was it fifty or seventy-five? There's a deposit involved, anyway, this is their water bill they, they left on.
Maybe in this desire of delay so deposit.
We have adjusted water rates, the rates and the deposits out there because of this and the deposits has been applied back, but we do turn the water off and there's a reconnect fee when we do that, but these people have mostly moved. University Oaks, really, you see so many there too, there's a lot of them are just rent boards and they, after they, they are up and gone, we have an opportunity to, to get it on, but this is, we make every effort to black them, but.
Some of them are deceased also, and they didn't have estate. Uh, Ms. Tony.
You can't put a lien on the property, you're talking about the rent, put a lien on the property to the property owner. Because he, whoever the property owner is probably got a nice hefty deposit also. Can take a walk or lien on the property.
Money's money, but the biggest one on here is two hundred and fifty-two dollars, there's one for three seventy-nine, there's one for seventy-two, one for ninety-seven. Why? The two oh two and one fifty-three.
But it's the idea that you will do it, that's true, that.
Excuse me.
Mayor, we lay every water bill in our town that it's not paid, we put a lien on that dock. There you go.
Cleanse it.
I rest my desk. I rest my case.
Yep. That's something we can definitely check into, but attorneys overworked as it is. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion to table this and look into putting liens.
I want you to want to do the write-offs first. It's not gonna stop until you need it. It's a bookkeeping thing that is asked before anyone's.
So we can still go after them for collections. We're just writing off and getting it off for the general. We have a motion to table, we haven't had a second yet.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion to table this until later. And a second. Then we had some new information that this is just a bookkeeping thing. We can still look into the collections. Is there any further questions? All?
What did Miss Lilly say? I'm sorry. That's okay.
Approve it with the, uh,
She wants to.
Amendment to it that we will approve the write-offs, but we will also look into lien and the property.
Mike, your second still stand with that?
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion on that? Amendment to the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item I have, uh, at the previous meeting, I brought, I brought to you a, uh, holiday schedule for twenty-seventeen. And in that it, uh, for Christmas, it shows Friday and Monday. And the discussion was, let's look into doing Monday and Tuesday. So what you have before you is a revised schedule, um, for the twenty-seventeen holidays for Christmas being observed on Monday, December twenty-fifth and the day after Tuesday, uh, December the twenty-sixth. I have two proposals there for you because I was asked to submit one also for your consideration to include President's Day, which will be Monday, February twentieth, as an additional holiday.
Go on.
So you have two proposals, Mr. Murray. Both of them with Monday and Tuesday for Christmas and with the day after Christmas. We get off to the union and they rotate with them. So by union rules, you can take Friday for Christmas Eve and good day for Monday and Christmas. But because of travel and stuff and people who get back from wherever they may be on Christmas Day, they need to. And they agree with that.
They were good for the other on that too.
Correct.
Is the post office under max closing on President's Day?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
As far as I know, they are.
It's a federal holiday.
Mr. Schiff, is this correct? That the Eighth Judicial Circuit does not take off for President's Day?
Did you have the ones from Eighth Judicial?
I've got, yes, sir.
Have been approved?
Looks like it was the twenty-second.
They'll take a couple of those other holidays.
Yeah.
Not President's Day. And they're doing, uh, July the fourth, they're doing two days there and one day at Christmas.
Right. So what is the, what would be the repercussions of us not being open and them being open? Would they then in turn follow suit and not be open for business a quarter?
They could, they could either, uh, close me on the court again or they could say I have to stay open because of the twenty-one day filing. So that's how I'm, I'm. We, we have always tried to follow them as close as we could, but there's times that, that it runs into this.
One way to have there is out.
It's out and it was out before Freddie got the issue. There's a different than ours this year.
Yeah, so we take the day before and then it's day, they also are gonna take the rush of show on.
When you lose it.
Right. So we have the off, is that. I, I'm, I, I really, honestly, I, I'm on my soapbox now, I find it pretty sad that we don't take President's Day off. I really do. I mean, uh, that's, that's not saying a whole lot about the respect we have for the great man who led this country, who was Washington here, Grant Lincoln.
Independent elections are saying even less.
This, uh, this cannon soapbox is taller than mine. I don't, I mean, I'll be, I'll be honest, I, I really, it, it bothers me that we don't take off in President's Day.
That's fine.
It really does. But the argument can also be made that we do have a floating holiday. If you believe that that much, you take President's Day off.
I told him I, I told him I'd try to get this, not going away present to them to get another holiday.
So the other, um, the other issue is, just so everybody's aware, looking at the calendar, that if we do take off President's Day, that will fall on a Monday before a commissioner meeting and I, I do make those Mondays off. It's hard to get stuff answered.
We usually have that on July fourth when we.
Anyway. Meeting? Do that? But I mean, the same thing happens, if I'm not mistaken, on Martin Luther King Day. New Year's Day this year?
Very.
Easter Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day. Which is not Memorial Day. And the Christmas Day is just a, is a, is a, yeah, we just wanna have a meeting and all of that, but we did do a different day.
When you make the first Tuesday, you have the first Monday, that's usually an extra one day off.
Alright, I guess we got two items of business that we're gonna, we're gonna adopt one of these calendars first and then we will discuss, uh, Miss Lilly's idea about moving leave days. We're gonna get that out of the process.
I'll make the motion to be, if that's the holiday is for the President's Day is off.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the calendar, or calendar recognizing President's Day as a day, a holiday from added in. And Christmas being, uh, recognized on December twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth rather than the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth. Is that right, Mike?
That's right.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion on that matter? All in favor, please see, oh, go ahead, Mr. Sheffield.
Hey, just curious, I said anything, just how many holidays do they have off?
John, would you just read those holidays off, please? If we adopted this resolution, our holiday, our adopt, adopt this, our resident, our holidays would be New Year's Day, January second, twenty seventeen, Martin Luther King Day, January sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, President's Day, February twentieth, two thousand seventeen, Good Friday, February, or April fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, Independence Day, July fourth, two thousand seventeen, Labor Day, September fourth, two thousand seventeen, Veterans Day, November tenth, two thousand seventeen, Thanksgiving will be recognized on November twenty-third and twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, Christmas will be December twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen.
What happened to Columbus State?
Never.
Never recognized Columbus State as, it is a federal holiday, but.
It's a federal option?
The court system doesn't recognize. We had another one. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this matter? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do you wanna discuss your, uh, moving on through the meeting days off of these Tuesdays, following Mondays that are holidays or do you bring that back? I do think that's a good idea because it, it's tough and we don't have money. Even though Freddie's always bailing on Monday, but sometimes he won't answer his lien.
He ain't got many more Mondays there.
He's got out of money.
He's short, too short.
Alright, I have one additional item. Are there any more to talk about that if you're bothered?
I just.
We can check with some counties and see how they do that. And then we can also check with some counties to, you know, sometimes I think the city of chief can just propose that at the runtime of the passing of a council person, you know, they just totally, not regularly, maybe for that particular month. So there's different ways to do this.
Something else to, uh,
Yeah, we can certainly look at all that.
But something to think about, just on the other hand, is, you know, there's been a little bit of outcry for night meetings.
Um, that.
So if we move those meetings to the night, that'd give you all day Tuesday to do your, your follow-up. And we can see what kind of, uh, what kind of, uh, turnout we would have, a night meeting, withdrawal, more people were, you know.
Or not be found to do it again, you're gonna try it as such.
Well, we could do it here, trial sporadically and it would.
You could do one morning meeting and then the other meeting, the evening meeting.
We'll, we'll get an idea and see.
And I think then the starting times are a question too. I think your Christmas start at five or something, I don't know. But I mean, we can check too with starting times.
Mr. Cannon?
While we're talking about this night meeting thing, in the past, we've had night meetings. Those people who complained about having day meetings and morning day-night meeting, never showed up.
But sometimes in order to silence your critics, you have to prove them wrong. Mr. Grant?
Mr. Chairman, did I hear you say a minute ago that November the tenth was, was Spectrum Day?
Next year, next year.
Next year.
For two thousand seventeen.
That's when he's being observed in two thousand seventeen.
This year it's November.
I remember that.
Right, well, November the tenth is my birthday, so we can take that off if you want to.
Grant, you can take whatever day is on the board. I got some creditors that say I need to be at work every day on Sunday.
I haven't worked in twenty-seven years.
I actually, John, Mr. Moody, you were looking to have that line meeting on a Tuesday.
We'll burn some random nations back in the connection to. Mr. Sheffield?
When you're looking into that, make sure you check the local cities, 'cause most of them are in heat.
We have school board, doesn't, school board all the night?
Yes.
But yeah, we do.
City of Williston is, is the two, is the evening of your day.
Secret key as well.
So you got your work now.
So we'll, we'll have more and more recommendations. Man, screw them all. We got a contract to talk about with Meridian.
Okay, next item I have is our annual contract with Meridian Behavioral Healthcare. Uh, during the budget sessions, y'all approved the seventy-five thousand dollar funding for them for this fiscal year, October one, twenty sixteen, and then September thirty, twenty seventeen. This is, uh, seventy-five thousand, uh, to release such funds in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per quarter upon receipt of divorce due on the first bill each quarter. And, uh, this is, uh, to provide general mental health assistance abuse services including Baker Act services to the citizens of Levy County, uh, in accordance with a contract between Meridian, uh, and UGMS Services as part of the mental, the mental health managing entity for the state of Florida and in accordance with the state of Florida statute, so that citizens are able to use the resources. So this is the contract.
I'll make the motion to approve that presented because it is definitely in help to the sheriff's office and to this county to have a contract with Meridian to have a contract with these people.
We have a motion and a second. You have reviewed this contract. Ms. Tony?
Did I hear Mr. Moody correctly, it's for Baker Acts? I didn't hear you mention Marching.
I'm just saying Baker Act services, uh, all the services they provide.
Including more.
Including mental health, uh.
Including more.
That's.
It does include?
Yeah, it always has.
It is not spelled out here.
Well, then we need to get, pardon, we should.
It's for mental health and substance abuse services, including Baker Act services in accordance with their contract with, with services. It's, this, this is what they covered for us under the statute.
It passed.
Passed, yes.
Amendment twelve.
Senate Bill twelve.
Senate Bill twelve. But that has to do with, with tane, holding.
Transporting.
Transporting.
But it costs money, however, Meridian is required under the statute, or if it's not Meridian, then it's not through the services, or they're required under the statute to assist us with the job. I did the training online, I did the PowerPoint online, I don't know if anybody from Mr. Moody about this, but we'll have to work with the sheriff's office and, and, and not just the sheriff's office, but the other one.
But you could have done online at the same time, because the PowerPoint is available with the, for the association.
Yeah, you have this ongoing now, the Senate Bill twelve thing and, and, and working with the sheriff's office and all. Also, the other one that's going on now is the medical marijuana. There's a meeting in the sheriff's office at one o'clock today, uh, with all of the people involved in the medical marijuana issue.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Is there any further discussion?
Here, because the big crack too is just a three-day period. So that's all like maximum, three days maximum. We're seeing more and more of that out, forty-eight hours or less.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um, Wilbur, you're up next, is, uh, is there Sparks here?
If the Sparks, it may be more appropriate for you to represent the nature water trail there to be able to answer any more questions that they might have with bills, which are at this time.
This is an item we had a few weeks ago, a resolution recognizing, uh, Swanee River as a national water trail. There were some questions from the audience and we decided to bring this back so that they can be better answered. Proceed.
Alright, um, what you have before you is Resolution, uh, two thousand sixteen dash zero six seven and it's a resolution by Board of County Commissions, Police Department of Florida, supporting the designation of Swanee River in Levy County, Florida as a national water trail. It goes on, whereas the benefits of designation of the Swanee River in Levy County as a national water trail, including national recognition as a recreational destination, national promotion on maps, through websites, increase tourism, increase revenue for local businesses. And whereas a recent benefit from promoting nature-based recreational opportunities, especially padding, paddling, biking, hiking, questering, activities, hunting, fishing, and wildlife viewing, to increase health benefits to our local communities and encourage youth to participate in outdoor activities. And whereas a recent benefit from promoting the rich culture and history contained within the watershed of the Swanee River, drawing visitors eager to explore its historical legacy. And whereas the Swanee River National Water Trail offers a unique opportunity for residents And whereas, the Swanee River National Water Trail offers a unique opportunity for residents and visitors to explore an unspoiled, pristine area of Florida and Georgia. And whereas, the cultural, historical, and natural resources of this area are some of the most unique in the southeast. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Board of County Commissioners, Leavy County, Florida, enforces the State of Florida's Office of Greenways and Trails application for designation of the Swanee River in Leavy County as a national water trail by the United States Department of Energy, duly adopted this eighteen day, October two thousand sixteen.
See, while the board have any questions for Mr. Dean and Ms. Sparks? Ms. Sparks, you want to come upstairs, go in, please?
Let's see. Is this in reference to a grant application?
No, ma'am, this is a, this is simply asking for an honorary designation. There's no financial implications in the statute of change. Uh, all we're asking is for the Swanee to be realized, to be recognized nationally as pretty much a part of Florida. It's, uh, it's an honorary thing, if someone is going to national water trails in part country, uh, they're going to Florida. And it recognizes that it's a type of sensory management practices. And so one of the things I have to say a lot about the new application of it, they're so excellent management, Swanee River by the, um, Water Management Service, the Swanee, the Swanee River Water Strip, and all of our partners that manage that, the Indiana, the two states, and the other counties. And so it's an opportunity for water manage, water managers of every county, state, and state to share ideas, to share resources, and a lot of the things that happen on the Swanee River are sharing with other counties that are interested.
We already have this, um, in our first information that we passed out.
All it's doing is linking what already exists, the maps and the website that already exists, the Swanee River Water Strip, they're proposing sustaining that thing to Georgia to where the Swanee originates, New, New Mexico Swamp, which already is a national water trail. But new trails within the swamp, we're not going to make them exist. So it's just strictly adding a layer of recognition to it. It's not, it's just gonna, um, bring awareness of the Swanee and everything is connected. So all the tourists and things have already developed, there's no new products being developed, there's no money donated to it, there's no changes to any access or anything, it's just recognizing what already exists.
So we all know that Georgia is telling them about this dumping of their sewer.
Not so.
And more than that, they're dumping out, if you're not from the side of the Swanee River.
This, this is an honorary thing, it's not, I'm not getting into regulations or trying to change any kind of regulations, that's... And that is also a Georgia thing, and that's, that's a huge, huge issue.
Or it is when you do.
Oh, I understand, and I agree with you, yes, you just may not really agree. This is not an effort to change anything, it's better to...
So what happens if we don't do this?
If it's not a national water trail, it just won't be recognized by the community. But everything, there's nothing new that's going to be created, all the websites already exist, and the maps that have been developed by the water management system, national deep rapid testing, that, 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 that. So it's, everything that exists now is already in the part of it. It's just adding a layer, it's like basically putting a label, this is now national, but it doesn't change even when it's real. I mean, we're not going to make new products and say, we're going to use it part of it, it's just...
So how does this, if there are people that live along the Swanee?
There's nothing, there's no access to, there's nothing, there's nothing different. It's just now recognized as a national water trail. And I've had, except for Leavy County, I've had every county send a letter of support, resolution support, and it's seen as favorable, and potentially benefit the community, to these people. And I don't really, I don't know how much that's going to impact that, it's, uh, it's seen as a beneficial thing, it's not really...
So, D.C., Gilchrist, see? If they all was counting on this?
I still already have a deal with some of the local counties, you see, and I would say they had some questions about it, but... Yeah, I've had all my, all the counties and two states.
Does this allow for any potential restrictions or regulations, uh, to be applied to the Swanee River by the feds?
Absolutely.
That currently do not exist?
Absolutely. I have, I have some, um, I've basically printed out the website, there's screenshots that you have to... But it's completely honorary, it's nothing, it's, there's no access or something.
Well, would you be opposed to having, uh, a town meeting?
Um, the deadline is November first, um, I'm not sure, you know, being as honorary and nature or something, going to change access or regulations at all. We haven't considered doing town meetings, because it's really, um, nothing that would impact anything, there's no change in condition that exists right now. Um, it's hot, if, if it's, if you, if you need that, we can talk about happening.
I think that you need to consider doing that. There's people out there that have questions that may not be here in this room, but they might be here in this.
So this is basically screenshots of the website, this is what, this is where, it, it doesn't, you don't see much, if you go to the very last page, you can see where the twenty trails, twenty-two trails already exist, and if you click on one of the hot links, you can see, uh, I picked out the open note because that's the closest one. And basically, they end up linking to the trail, to the website that already exists. So it's, uh... This is just an information product for people that are curious about it, they, they have to keep drilling through it to find out.
So this doesn't have, and Ms. Sparks, I want to preface one to say, because I, I understand, I'm serving as the chairman of our TDC, and I understand how people utilize these websites and things to, you know, look up places that they want to go on vacation or go paddle or whatever, you know, so I, I do understand that you see some importance here. Um, does this declare, would this resolution declare the Swanee River as outstanding Florida waterway?
No.
Would it not?
Not gonna exist.
This is real straightforward.
Okay, because in our comprehensive plan, this, if this leads to an outstanding Florida waterway, it does put restrictions on development along the river and development there. Most particular, I'm not doing without a state full of...
Nothing regulatory, or nothing tampering against it, it's just, pretty much, it's just a...
Just a, just a feel-good?
Yeah.
Resolution. That's all the questions I have.
Does this have anything to do with...
No, absolutely not. All this is, is, it's applying the national water trail logo to, to see, you want to put on the TDC sign? It's making another layer of awareness for people that aren't traveling, which you can see that all the outstanding features. Completely non-military, nothing.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for Mr. Sparks at this time? Um, all right. Ms. Tony.
Since my objection to this, uh, questions, I have been back and forth with Ms. Sparks, asking a number of questions. It was at the August seventeenth board meeting, and, um, I, my concern is Ms. Sparks' letter of August sixteenth, where she is asking the Board of County Commissioners for a letter of support and consent for public access. So what does that mean?
All that's doing is saying you recognize that the access that exists currently is part of the trail, that it's public now, it's maintained, and it has, and it won't be changed. There's no additional request for more access, or cutting access off at any point.
I'm, I'm just not happy with that. To me, that, you know, living down on the Swanee, we have a neighbor, wonderful people, bought a house on the campus area boat ramp. They have a very nice floating dock, and everybody who comes to use the boat ramp thinks that that's for them. So consequently, these folks put up a split rail fence. That didn't work, they couldn't find people sitting on it, in their back, fishing from their floating deck. So they put up a privacy fence. And this is only going to encourage more of it. I don't, I don't quite understand, we have rivers in this state that have more historic value than the Swanee. Why you're not pursuing that? I sent in my letter to you, why don't you go back to St. John's? That has a whole lot more historic value than the Swanee.
Well, we could argue that a long time, but the Swanee has a very, very long historic, rich cultural legacy, and it's well explained, it's well interpreted already. There's spatulas websites, there's, uh, the Stephen Foster Boat Culture Center, there's just tons and tons of different... Almost everywhere you have public access, there's eX, there's information sharing, a lot of history and source, but that's not developed.
Well, I'm not sure it's developed in the county, no. Um, we have a little something at Clay Landing, who's, Mr. Welton left. Uh, we have a little something at Clay Landing, we have nothing at Campus Area, we have a little bit of instruction at Fowler's Bluff, we have nothing at Usher, nothing at Manatee, well, that's probably, nothing just annual. I, I think, I think, you know, in my research, because the day after that meeting, I started calling people, I was very distressed to find that Save Our Swanee was dissolved. They filed their dissolution papers in March, and they were dissolved May fifteenth. They used to be one of the most vocal supporters of trying to clean up the Swanee. Now we're talking about putting more people on the Swanee. And as far as you're saying that we're not going to have more people down in my way, yes, no, trust me. We'll have people putting in all up and down with all of our boat ramps, and then the next thing that are going to be coming in here asking you to revise the boat ramps to accommodate five hours.
Well, I hear your concerns.
I have a set of questions. But you still have an answer. I mean, I've asked you several times. Can't, we had a town meeting, so we didn't, and other people. When I made my phone calls, the day after, I talked to the water management system, they knew nothing about it. I talked to Andrew Gooding, Lawrence Swanee Letters. And Andrew knew nothing about it. Um, Mark, at Management Springs, he knew nothing about it. My neighbors knew anything.
I've been working on this for months, contacting people in batches, I've, I've contacted all the managers up and down federal agencies, I have a huge file here that letters from Andrew Gooding's employees.
Well, I'm sure he's contacted him now, because he and I talked about it.
I, but I, I've done the outreach, ma'am, I didn't do it all the same day, I've had to do it incrementally around all the other stuff that I do, but I've, I've got complete support from people that are, are in favor of this and see it as a beneficial thing.
And I've been corresponding with you for two months, and now you're saying the deadline is November first.
Ms. Cannon, your question?
I left my answer at the end, it's, um...
Okay. I answered.
Uh, Ms. Lily asked my question, but I want to, regarding the dumping by Valdosta Sewerage Treatment Plant, which your favorable department is not enforcing against, I would like to know what the status is, I don't find that funny, ma'am. And it goes on unabashed, unless I hear otherwise from you. Fine mirror of a national water trail. I'm ready for your answer anytime.
I, I don't understand your question, Ms. Cannon.
The dumping by Valdosta Sewerage.
Okay, this goes on about us to Georgia.
Right, and that's on the Swanee, yes?
Yes, ma'am, so.
Okay. And when I still made the meetings to Swanee River Water Management District, several years ago, that was already being protested. Protesting is just like what we do in, uh, foreign policy, without ever coming through. It's time we came through, otherwise, I am agreeing with Ms. Tony and Ms. Lily at the minimum, a town meeting, otherwise...
This is two different things, first of all. But the, the same issues that we're facing with the, the dumping of the sewage overflow is the same issues we're facing on the Chattahoochee River with the limitation of the water, the using the water in the, in damming it in Atlanta to, to provide their needs, and reducing our water flows that is choking the Appalachian Cold Bay. Whenever you run into issues that cross state lines, there's really no authority, there's no authority for Florida to go in to Georgia and say, y'all got to clean up to your sewage treatment plant, you got to let more water come down the Chattahoochee River, you got to quit doing these things that are detrimental to us because we're the, we're at the end of the line. That's a federal issue that, quite frankly, our federal legislatures and legislators and the President of the United States should step in and, and moderate, not regulate, but at least moderate some sort of applicable solution.
This, this lady's asking for designation for... National Water Trail, which is absolutely federal.
For, for a tourism-based issue, and what we have, what y'all were talking about is an environmental issue. It's kind of two different things, I mean...
This is the Department of Environmental Pollution, as it is well known for, right?
They are very far-reaching, Ms. Cannon.
And it has absolutely proven once again, that it has that title deservedly.
I think that if Ms. Sparks, uh... If she felt that there was a, uh, that there was a... But everybody knows there's an issue, don't take it that way, but if she had some control, then I'm sure she'd stop it. She's wanting, uh, this river system to be recognized as a tourist destination to, to try to bring people to enjoy the Swanee River, enjoy Leavy County, and, and the surrounding counties. Um, the last thing that, that she could want is, is the people about us to be dumping their waste, uh, but...
Well, some positive things that happen a lot of the time is, and in my, in my application, I have to point out all the good things that the communities do support about the Swanee. The, the Save Our Swanee may be dissolved, but there's a group called Current Problems, and you've probably heard of it, you probably have senior city groups and scouts. It's pretty incredible, it's an umbrella nonprofit organization that recruits an annual cleanup, and they, and they clean up, and they teach hundreds of ways, they recruit thousands of volunteers, and so...
The Harbor Shore Management donates to the...
Yeah, it's tremendous, it's part of the, the, how much people love the Swanee River represents how well it's supported. And that's part of what I have to pull, I, I have to prove in my long, long designation application, it's like, is it proof of community support, you know, is it sustainable, how is conservation, so I have to answer a whole lot of questions like that. So I have, there's lots of examples of existing programs, it's exemplary. The Swanee's well loved, I mean, not that...
To have your town meeting, so that you get, you get people behind you.
Okay.
This is one that really belongs to the county.
Right, I want, I want people to want this to happen, I have a brilliant opposition, so it's not been, there's not been a request, you know, up until this, you know, kind of, kind of, you can't, so I'm happy to do that.
You do that, and you come back, and you have my support.
Ms. Tony.
How many people in this room have ever participated in a Swanee River cleanup? How long ago?
Three years ago, the first year we donated pick-up tools to current problems.
Have, have any of you ever or tried to organize a Swanee River cleanup? Last year, I sent out two hundred and fifty letters to the property owners on both sides of the river, from Manatee Springs State Park to Fowler's Bluff. Fourteen people and three boats. And by the way, we paid our own tipping fee for the garbage we took out, we all collected and plucked, and paid our own. But...
I'm trying to get the boats removed, does that count for...
Well, we found, we found a sixteen-foot boat in Kentucky that the, um, fish and wildlife couldn't be bothered with, so we put, we brought it in. People do not have regard for our resources, and that's, you're, you're just inviting more of that. I could not even begin to tell you some of the things we found in that river. Like people who were talking.
All right. So we're at the, what is, President's order? What's the pleasure of the board here?
That's, that's possible.
Okay, right. I mean, at the end of the day, and this is kind of where, where I was at with this, uh, I understand Ms. Tony's concerns, and, you know, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a delicate place to be. I understand Ms. Tony's concerns and, you know, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a delicate place to be because certainly you want to promote the Swanee River, you want to promote people coming into Leavy County and, and supporting our businesses, staying in our hotels, seeing all the beauty and the things that we have to offer. But it is an inconvenience for the folks who live on the river. It is, it, it, it is an inconvenience for, for some of the folks that, that may be impacted by this. But, you know, on the, on the other side of it, if we don't adopt it, it's not going to stop it. It's just, we're not going to be able to, to utilize the logo on our, our website. And, and maybe that's not a big deal to, to some people. But, I mean, you know, Dixie says yes, we say no. The ankle draw a line down the middle of the river. I mean, it's still, it's still is what it is. But, but I, I don't have any problem with a, with, with this town hall meeting, get some input from the community. I think that's a great idea, so I, I think that's where we're at, Ms. Sparks. We're asking you to try to organize some sort of outreach to the public to get their input. And my, my advice to you, and I know that it's, it's easy for me to tell you what to do, would be if, if it sounds like you've still got Gilchrist to go, that maybe you would encourage people from Gilchrist to, to do it. Maybe host this like at Fanning Springs or somewhere that's centralized so that the people of the tri-county area can all have opportunity to come give their, give their input.
Mr. Grant, Mr. Chairman, how can you promote the Swanee River as a tourist attraction with feces flooding down the river? That's what I want to know.
It's a big river. No. You know, how would promote the goal? Just grant, how do you know, I mean, it's, I, you know, even though I know what goes on, I don't, it don't stop me from supporting the Swanee River a lot of the time. After the meeting, I'll tell you what some people are going to say about that comment, but I'm not going to say it. Just kind of add, pile it on where I jumped in. Anyway.
Is that a play on word, Mr. Chairman?
No. All right, Ms. Sparks, if you don't mind, I'm doing that. We'd be glad to train us back and adopt your, your letter, your resolution.
Yes, sir.
So I have work with Mrs. Dean. Yes, ma'am, and then Ms. Lilly promised me involved also. Thank you, Ms. Ma'am. Mr. Chairels, I see you got moved all your landfill, but you're still in.
Still way down the list.
You don't.
You're getting me down my couch in the Swanee River.
Oh, yeah. I got one thing today. I get your request for approval of the resolution, decision, two thousand and sixteen, day zero five zero, author on the chair design application for Sullis Lake Small County, Sullis Lake Handicap, and appointing the director of Sullis Lake to author the handicap.
We have a statement, we have a word left here. Question in a second. Back and forth, you approve that or deny that?
Second. We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Benny, do y'all have a, do y'all have any sort of association as far as like local directors? Do y'all have any correspondence or anything? There is some, some legislation that's being worked on that worries me a little bit. Has to do with tire collection fee money and its use. There's a bunch of this grant when he comes out of that. And I think there's some people down south and they, they want to take that away from us, so. If you've talked to any of your other, um, like the director friends that you may want to pass that along, we're going to keep a close eye on that. Especially from the smaller rural counties that depend on this and operate. Does anyone want to take all that money and put it in skipper? Any good for us? Thank you. Leave it alone, Mr. Gale. Good morning.
Morning, guys. I'm all. I have two items here. First item is a request for two subordination agreement for a ward and those Manalastas. For shift, that's a system case number four one seven. It means all our requirements for subordination, we are getting a low interest rates and they are using the terms. Low interest rate from six percent to three percent and there's no cash payback from this subordination. We just ensure our interest is maintained in their property for the remainder of their tenures.
They can pay three percent. Is that what you're saying?
Their interest rate that they currently have is six point two five percent and they're refinancing their first mortgage to now three percent. They can't push up to them. They don't get any payback from this refinancing.
Okay, so this is one thing.
Refinance.
Okay.
Right.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rock Meeks, second by Commissioner Rooks. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Second item I have is request for a two-year deferred payment agreement for Sarita Appleton, Appleton, sorry, birds that exist in a home in Nogodistan. The amount I will approve in is ten thousand two hundred dollars.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Meeks, is there a second? Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries, Marlon, before you leave, see Mr. Sheffield, he may be interested in a, uh, application to...
I wouldn't have a ring.
Uh, no, I...
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shindley? Back again.
Again, one quick item, just as housekeeping. Um, staff request that more approve a motion to appoint Mr. Bond Lee as your alternate planning commissioner. Remember, he was your regular planning commissioner. And I think he had an agenda of last month to add a new planning commissioner. And seeing as your code allows you to have up to four alternates, you already have one, right now Robert Bond. And this would, uh, motion would just, uh, it kind of would move Mr. Bond Lee from regular planning commissioner to an alternate. And he needed to die.
Ruby Mondero.
Yes.
Uh, to give y'all some history, Mr. Lee approached me six months ago about coming off the board. And, you know, he said, but take your time, I want to find a suitable replacement. You know, so we did that and, uh, or I feel we did that. And, um, then he comes to me and says, man, I can't believe you just replaced me like that. I'm like, what are you talking about? He's like, wow, uh, I didn't know you were just going to replace me. And I'm like, oh my God. Said, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Bond, I thought you said you wanted me to replace you. Well, I did, but I guess he, I don't know, I guess he wants some fanfare, wanted me to ask him to stay or something. So we came up with this, uh, we came up with this compromise. He, uh, he, he does spend most of his time in Alabama now. He, he has, he lives out there and here, so he kind of travels. So this, he never lived there, I should say, visits there, but, uh, this will allow him to fill in as an alternate when he's available. Still make you feel like he's part of the team, yes. I said that wouldn't be a problem. I didn't think it'd be a problem.
I know Mr. Bond very well, my next motion, we accept it, uh, presented.
Say, we have a motion by Commissioner Joyner, and a second by Commissioner Rock Meeks. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Shindley, why haven't we do this whenever we were here? You could have left. According to that. Every time she called me, she says, this is Shindley, your planner. I'm like, Shindley, you're the only Shindley I know.
Got a point.
Yep.
Hi.
She goes in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I've got three quick ones. Uh, basically what I want to do is, the first one, I want approval, um, for emergency directed declaration two thousand and sixteen, that six eight percent, all Hurricane Hermaine declarations. Want me to read the numbers off form or?
No. I don't think so. Do you have that in for the record? We have a motion by Commissioner Rooks, second by Commissioner Meeks. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and the next one is a request for people to ratify emergency declaration two zero one six dash zero six nine. And that was for Hurricane Matthew.
We have a motion in a second. Motion by Commissioner Rooks, second by Commissioner Meeks again. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. All right, and the final one is, um, approve Hurricane Matthew local respite from emergency declaration two thousand and zero one six, that year seven hundred two percent, Hurricane Matthew local respite from emergency declaration two thousand and sixteen, that year six nine.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Meeks, second by Commissioner Rooks. This time, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. This is why I love government, we just ratified it and demolished it all in two motions.
So that was another question I've got on that, while we're talking about that. How can we just not let the industry expire? No.
You know, I'd have to look that up. I, I know that this is the process, but I'd have to look whether it's in our ordinance or whether it's in the...
I understand the ratifications and that portion, but when, it only lasts for seven days anyway, why would you let it out?
I don't know.
Thank you.
All right. Public safety. Did you have the attorney that gets not going something?
There's a lot of names I don't know.
But you're admitting it. Got you.
I said I don't have a lot of...
Good morning, Chief. Not going to introduce you, you've been here longer than everybody should have been. Okay, Matt Carroll. Public safety.
Uh, I'm coming for you today to ask for approval from the board and commission for the chairman to sign, for the public safety department certificate of public convenience and necessity. This is, uh, state statute gives the board the right to approve the service provider and services, whether it's your own or contracted or decided to do it. And this certificate of convenience and necessity is required for us to get our license plate from the state floor.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rooks, second by Commissioner Meeks. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, motion, move carries.
So how's it going out there?
It's, it's going. Very busy. I, I, I'm really starting to feel like I've got my feet under me. I've got a picture of, of the, the lay of the land. Now I'm trying to get all this, everything, all our times out and what I need to take here first. Some of it's become pretty apparent, but there's, there's a, there's a lot on the plate. But I'm, I'm, I'm excited about y'all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Jennings is here. Don't sit down. We also have Dr. Eric Simone with us. Is that right? Mr. Dean, uh, Mr. Simone runs a, runs an ag program for the four H, for extension program for our area. And Mr. Ed Jennings is here. He is our new extension director, or is he the interviewee? We don't know yet.
Ask Dr. Simone.
Okay, he's still our interviewee, but he went and introduced him this morning. So I'll let him overtake that before I get any more awkward than already am.
Thank you, John. Um, just past week, we had an opportunity to interview, uh, Mr. Jennings as potential CED slash livestock session for Leavy County. Uh, one of the ladies on the panel there, uh, was talking about his, uh, application there that is probably as well put together as any that she had ever saw. And one of the things that I look past at is to put in a resume like that, yeah, organizational skills and it's good, but you got to have something to put on the paper. If you look at, uh, Mr. Jennings' background and what he's, with potentially bringing to Leavy County, I think we would be very lucky to have him here and the experience that he's had in different areas through extension, four H, and the different things that he was able to answer from the panels of the interview. I, I think he's very well equipped to step into this role here. I won't say anymore. If y'all have any questions for Mr. Jennings, I'll allow him to be able to answer that. Mr. Jennings?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jim. All I can say is, uh, I'm convinced that you're going to set inquiries up with y'all because we need a big livestock person in this county. We have a rock front person nasty and we certainly do need you. And I'm going to ask you, so up front, please, please, come and get our four H back up to the very least, please. And help me to, uh, challenge.
Yes, sir.
And thank you again for that, if you do.
Well, it hasn't been offered to me yet.
Thanks for taking some of the offer this early for me. That's Mike, always on my team.
I'm the one on the hot seat here.
Can you just tell us a little bit about the show?
Yes, ma'am. I was kind of waiting on that. Thank you, Mr. Rooks, I appreciate that. Uh, my name is Ed Jennings. I have, um, worked for the University of Florida, walked in the extension service for the past thirty-two years. You can see on my, uh, resume, uh, Mr. Dean talked about. And I have worked several different areas. I started as a four H agent many years ago. I have also worked as a single county livestock agent in Pasco County. I was the county extension director at Sumter County for about seven years. After that, I accepted a multi-county livestock educational position for, for county area of Pasco, Sumter, Hernando, and Citrus. So I've been right to your southward, sort of, more than that. I feel like I've earned a lot of experience in the position. I have looked at a little bit what I can find and determine about Leavy County, and I think it's a good fit for me. And I am impressed by the agricultural power, natural resource power of the county. You rank in the top ten in a number of commodities. And it looks to me like most of the ingredients, if not all, are here for a top flight extension program, total extension program. You mentioned the youth, you have the ag side, family consumer science side, the terminal side. I think I've been around long enough to, to appreciate the total program. I am a livestock agent by training. Most of us, you know, we like to put the most emphasis on the program you're interested in most. Three or four H agent, I lean toward you. The family consumer science agent, we lean toward that. But I've been around so long that I, I do recognize the total value of the total program. And when I put on that county extension director hat, as I did before, I changed a little bit from the way I am right now. Right now, I'm a livestock guy. I support those livestock creatures in my area. And I will do that here as well. But I also understand how to support the total program. And like you said, Commissioner, for a program, it's very near and dear to my heart. As a livestock agent, I still do a lot of, like you for, not only four H, but FOK. You know, our junior cattle associations are pretty active down in our area. I don't know if you have one here. Do you want to work with it? If we don't, maybe we'll get ongoing, cattle association, so does. I think that's pretty much it for me for a brief introduction. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to address them.
So you've been in the business for thirty-two years?
Yes, sir.
You've seen a lot come and a lot go for thirty-two years.
Yes, sir, I have, especially in my area of the state. The growth is, is an issue. It might become an issue here someday and I think I'm pretty well positioned to, to, maybe I can help. I mean, I'm willing to work with each agency in the county for that matter. When I come here, I'm part of the team, part of Leavy County Dean. And I, I've done that in Pasco County. I, I work with the sheriff's department a lot in Pasco County. They have their own specific ag unit. I do a lot of work and training with them. And, um, doesn't matter if it's, I've worked with road and bridge on weed controlling sides of the roads, whatever it takes to help the county move forward. I believe in that.
That'd be a nice job. I see you got a C in American history.
I did some checking on you and I know what your major was.
I just, I don't even know what to say.
If I'm lucky enough to get this job, maybe you could tutor me?
I was, um-
How many years ago was that?
Nineteen seventy-five. Um, I, I looked at, you know, looked through here and-
What about grade school?
And I saw all the, uh, you know, the people who raided you, I guess is the proper way to say that. I don't know where you found so many people who related to you. Everything on here is excellent, except for one said that your writing was just above average.
My favoritism's not to ruin it.
You probably need to work on that, but everything, really, I mean, everything was excellent, it is, it is very impressive. I hope that, personally, from, from where I sit, I hope that we can come to an agreement, uh, hopefully the university finds you as a suitable fit.
That would be nice.
You are here, we have.
No pressure, no pressure, no pressure, so, uh... You know, just, I mean, we, we have a, we need, you know, a man with your expertise in the county, which, you know, to complement, uh, Mr. Drew with his road prop expertise and, and now we've, we've, um... Got someone to run the four H program, and I think a good fit, it's a little younger. No offense to you, but, you know, but that's more geared towards what four H is about, you know, I mean, it's about dealing with youth and I think that, uh, strong the four H program as we have in Levy County, that it may be asking one person that would do too much to, to run the whole program and still have to run the four H. I think we, we moved in the right direction and more importantly, we've done it and, and actually done it for the same kind of money, we're going to have a better service to, uh, the agricultural side as well as the four H. Ms. Lily put stand daggers in there. I would have recognized you for the job because of your beautiful appearance. So, anyway, that's it, that's all I can say, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
Glad to hear what you did, yes.
Perfect, Levy County, I hope you're safe. Uh, I'm very much impressed with it. I got one trivia question.
Okay.
It come up a couple of weeks ago. On a horse's foot.
Oh, that would be a dog.
On a naked horse's foot, and it gets a stone through it. That's a frog, they have to turn them off, am I correct?
Frog is a certainly, but that's the song.
That's right, and how do you protect that frog with shoes?
Am I correct? You can, they also can make a plastic plate to put in there if it's got a serious problem.
Or you can just remove all the loose stones off of our roadways. I think the shoe is the answer.
Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Yes, sir. Sorry you missed the Halloween, I was, the Halloween cookout, I was not there.
Anything else?
No, sir, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we good, are we good to go with him, huh? Alright.
Yeah, do we need to vote?
We need to vote?
I think it's an introduction.
Right?
It was nice meeting you.
Very nice meeting you. As an applicant, not as, not as a new guy. Yes.
I was just going to add that, uh, Mr. Jennings will be meeting with the staff and the volunteer later this evening.
Is the new four H director also going to be there in four H? No. Just Mr. Jennings.
I like him. Who's the new four H?
You say you like John, too?
That was before.
There you have it.
Um, she is, is, if we formally hire her, correct?
We made an offer, the offer is accepted, the paperwork is in, uh, in progress, target starting day, November fifteen.
What is her name again, Cassandra?
Genevieve Mendoza. Genevieve Mendoza.
Genevieve Mendoza.
Where's she from?
Lysin Bronson.
I'm from here. Right here in Robson.
I don't know where she came from originally, is she Lysin Bronson? Jenny, who's called Jenny?
Jenny.
Jenny. Alright, well, thank you, thank you, Dr. Simone, thank you, Mr. Jennings, for coming to the studio today. Alright, it is eleven o'clock, and we want to take a brief recess before we start IT because I think that's going to be exciting. And the clerk just left, so I will declare a recess for five minutes.